Let's see, real quick, Dave, just a mic check.
Hello there.
All right, fantastic. All right. Time being seven o'clock. I call to order the Franklin School Committee meeting. Meeting is recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. And we've got a great audience in here. I want to thank all of the admin and the staff. All have been rocking it this past week. Already put in another hard day of work and here you are with us. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And as we have a few members online, we're just going to do a quick roll call. Griffith?
Present.
Charles?
Here.
O'Sullivan?
Here.
Son Polley?
Yes.
McNeil?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
And Callahan, here. Excellent. All right. Jump into our pledge student. Ella, if you want to come on up.
Here. Ella DiSafano is a senior at Franklin High School. She is an invaluable member of the school community and sets a great example for others to follow. Much of that is demonstrated through her role as a current president of student government. Ella is in the top 5% of her senior class and a member of math, science, Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. Additionally, Ella is a Project 351 ambassador and continues her journey of service with them today as an alumni mentor.
Get all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all still have to stay here, sorry. Now, as is customary, we'll pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, review of agenda. Agenda look okay to everybody? All right, payment of bills taken care of. Payroll, Vice Chair McNeil?
Payroll's in order.
All right, and we've got some FHS student reps.
So, some news for the whole school. There's a new period called Wind Block, and it was just added to the schedule this year. Students are instructed to pick a class and they have to go for 30 minutes a day. And it's in order to complete unfinished work, make up tests, and receive help in a certain subject. There's also a new traffic pattern near the side and corner lots. There are two one-way lanes coming in from Oak Street and two one-way lanes going out to Oak Street. Juniors and seniors with on-campus parking must park in spaces with white lines. Additionally, this upcoming Thursday is a half-day and school ends at 11 o'clock. As for sports, girls volleyball won their game against Lincoln Sudbury 3-0. Girls soccer beat KP 7-2. The boys soccer team has a home game tomorrow at 6:00 PM against Foxborough. And our football team is playing Wachusett this Friday at 7:00 PM. It's a home game, and the theme is yellow in honor of childhood cancer. As for the senior class, graduation is on June 5th. Additionally, seniors who are using their own photographer for senior portraits must submit their pictures by October 3rd, and there's more information on the newsletter. And as for the junior class, PSATs are administered on October 18th, and there's more on Vodoka.
Thank you very much. Start down here with questions, comments from the committee?
No comments.
No comments?
No comments. Good to see you.
And online?
None for me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I love how Jack's already talking about the graduation date. He's throwing that out. That was in his first two minutes.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I can tell. I can tell. So, thank you, Jack. Jack is also joined for our student reps. You can see, there'll be a rotation throughout the year, and you'll see Jack joined by Keaton Cooper, who is our other senior. And also, there's two juniors. It'll be Callie Joyce is the junior class president, and Sravan Dev will also be here. He's the junior class vice president, and he will be joining them in rotation as we go throughout the year. So, thank you. Okay. I have a few updates to provide. One, the opening of school. After 15 months of planning, I'm looking around at the crowd, and communication and coordination and effort, we kicked off the '25-'26 school year. It officially began for the Franklin Public Schools. We welcome back all of our first through 12th grade students. On Tuesday, the 2nd, kindergarten joined us on September 3rd, and then our ECDC students joined us on the 4th and 5th respectively. The energy in our hallways, the classrooms, the excitement from our students to reconnect with friends, and as they begin to make new friends, the melding of staff across our schools in a variety of different ways coming together, and it's really just the beginning of a new year of learning for us, but it definitely is a hallmark of a very special year, given all of the change that has been happening. And I'm just really, really excited, and I know I speak on behalf of our team, of all the work that went into opening school. This team worked tirelessly before the summer even started, as you've all been made aware, but just the work pushing into the last minute, it felt like an adrenaline. I felt the adrenaline kind of dump this weekend of like the lead-up and the buildup, but definitely, they kept the energy and brought so much, and our teachers, just their classrooms looked magnificent. Students were welcomed. Every class I went in was just the energy and the vibe across K through, pre-K through 12 was just amazing, and I feel as though, I feel very fortunate to be part of a team of folks that are helping to shepherd along the new era for Franklin Public Schools. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Each school will have an open house night. They will communicate those respectively, if they have not already, through their newsletters and some of their other communication channels, so please be on the lookout for those. And I'll transition into our staffing report. We have hired, or are in the process of hiring, 65 staff members for this year. That's our total comp right now. The breakdown for vacancies, we have two teaching positions, nine ESP positions, one LPN, and five non-union. In the report, we will share with you, and you'll find more detail and background on some of those positions. They're also listed online as open postings that folks can apply to, and we're happy to share any information that you may need or any questions you have on that. And I'll stop there and pause, and then I'll give a transportation update. So, any questions so far?
Perfect.
No, thank you.
And online, McNeil?
No questions to me, thank you.
All right, Gallagher?
I think she's good.
I think she's good. All right, go right ahead. Okay. Okay, so with transportation, you've seen some of the emails, communications that have been sent out around this topic. We have a chart that we've put, we've been tracking, just to provide some data. Typically, when we have a school committee meeting, it's an opportunity for us to share the, just verifiable information, you can put it on. And I've asked Colin to come up and join us, but the team has worked really hard, and when I think back to the traffic study, the recommendations, all of the plans and procedures that have been put in place for arrival and dismissal, we recognize, I think we tried to communicate this well throughout the year, that we would experience some delays as schools started. Just in general, every year, the first few days are definitely more delayed, more people are driving and dropping than typical, they want, some want to take photos of the first day. There's different routines families have and rituals that they have for each year. With that said, when you combine that with some of the, just the volume at some of our elementary schools, our middle, middle connected to our high school, we were really thoughtful in putting a plan together. We have a plan, we're sticking to our plan, but we're holding it loosely and we're modifying and adjusting as needed. And this, this is just a tracking of, we've got to replace the lamp on this thing, huh? The tracking of some of those days, and Dr. Rogers, can you make that like 1:25? We'll be sharing more information, but we've been tracking each day just to get a sense. So, after day one, day one was a slow day. It was the slowest day of the school year so far. Just to point out, you can see in orange, we highlighted some of those traffic delays. So, you see the middle school at 2:28, the high school you can see at 2:30, and then you can see Washington, 3:40, Lincoln, 3:30. Those were the late times for the cars, for example. You can see bus data on there as well. The next day, day two, it dropped pretty dramatically. And there's a trickle effect here. When the middle school, if they're able to dismiss in a timely manner and on time, those are the same buses that go to the elementary schools, right? So, you can see where a trickle-down effect will occur. The second day, the middle school in 24 hours went from 2:28 to 2:06 for cars. And I'm just picking, I'm choosing cars for the sake of keeping this understandable. If you look at Franklin High, after a few days, they went from 2:30, they've dropped to 2:25 and kind of leveled out. And you'll see at Washington, 3:40, and it's been, it's dropped down to 2:58, and at Lincoln, it went from 3:30 to 3:01. So, we've made significant progress. That said, we've also made some internal adjustments, starting to prepare earlier to get students to go. We're working backwards now with that plan in order to back into where we ultimately want to be. Colin has some more data to share because we did that traffic presentation, and they had estimated last year, just to give people a reference point to what some of the times were last year from the traffic study. I'll kick it over to you, Colin.
Yeah, sure. I think everybody is, you know, seeing the queue lengths that we had talked about. The, I think the interesting statistic to point out right now, though, is that when they were conducting the traffic study at Keller, the average day, the queue would wrap up around 2:55. Now, with Lincoln Street with such a huge population, and not only that, you know, each year we only have maybe one new level of kindergarten, it's like half the school now is new. So, having it such a new experience versus just one grade level, and being on day six, we're only about plus six or seven minutes right now from what it used to be to take that many cars through the queue. At Jefferson, it was 3:00 for the queue to dissipate, and this year, today, was at 3:01. And again, significant increase in the number of cars and new for about half of the school. So, I think, you know, we were still trending really well for where we're at right now.
I think we're going to be resetting. These are, these are in essence, new schools. They are new schools. So, we need to reset as well on what those times actually are and land, but ultimately, we wanted to just show, because I know a lot of people had to wait in line, many people have put out information out into the, into the world, and we wanted to provide you with some verifiable statistics to kind of show the trend. I can tell you now, we will continue to have delays. You will wait in a car, in a line, just like you would if you lived in any town, in, well, not any town, most towns of our size, if you were to go to pick up your child, because everyone's converging on the school, including buses. So, I just want to set expectations. I also, I made my point around behavior, parent behavior. These are a handful of people we will address individually if it were to continue. I will say, as things have progressed, I have not received any reports, but those first few days, I would, I'll just share, I was disappointed. I was really disappointed because, one, I don't want my staff to be insulted or yelled at, but ultimately, I, the amount of work that went into it, to have that be a reaction, I get it too. I get waiting in line and having that be part of it. I get the delay piece, but certainly, it's not how we conduct ourselves, and when we interact with folks, and I don't expect it to happen back. So, these are a handful of people. I'm not a fan of admonishing the general public who have been very patient, understanding. I know the principals have said that they've received many emails of support of the work that happened, and I think that's not lost on me as well, but I wanted to just address my remarks and those comments, and we're happy to take any questions regarding this before we transition into the rest of the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And yeah, to start, I want to thank you for putting this together. And just for, as we see right here, like the improvements that have occurred day in and day out. You know, I was, day one, I drove down Lincoln Street on the first day of school on my way to work, just to kind of see how it was going to be, and it was far and away the worst stretch of my commute. With the exception, actually, of seeing Eric Stark in a three-piece suit directing traffic. Thank you very much, especially because you were doing that, knowing that we can't afford hazard pay. But it's tricky, and yet, at the same time, we see how quickly you were able to adjust those systems to create a better experience, and thank you all so much for that. And I want to thank the admin and our staff as well, and apologize for the way that superintendent, as you mentioned, the minority of folks, but still some folks, how that's not what we would expect, and that's not what Franklin is either. But to the vast majority of the community, thank you for your patience. Thank you for listening to the school leaders as they adjust those procedures and for following those directions that kind of create the most safe environment for our kiddos, and for all the admin and the teachers that are going through, and from bell to bell, everything I've been hearing about from, from the superintendent, from folks down the flag football field to my own kids, it's an amazing experience they're having, and to go through all of that and then deliver on improvements for this dismissal time is terrific. And for the community, I want to thank you for the grace that has been given to allow that to happen. Because to kind of go through this reorganization process, this is not the last growing pain that we're going to see. And as little bumps come up, I please hope that we'll still continue to see that grace as we move forward. But again, I do understand the frustration that kind of comes with that, but for everybody who is paying attention right now and is frustrated about the arrival and the dismissal process, I hope you are going to remain just as frustrated, angry, engaged, just about the overall budget situation here in Franklin. For folks maybe who hadn't seen it, we were away on vacation, whatever the case is, over the summer, during a FinCom meeting, they announced that the town of Franklin is already looking ahead towards at least a $2 million structural deficit. And if history is any indication, that means that the schools are going to be taking the vast majority of those cuts and those burden. And I feel any frustration that we're feeling right now is going to pale in comparison to another year of over a million dollars in cuts to our budget. So, please, continue to stay engaged. The schools begin their budget process in January, FinCom quickly kind of comes in thereafter, and Town Council very shortly thereafter in the springtime. The, Son's a huge wrestling fan, so the immortal words of John Cena, "The time is now." You want to be in on this, now's the time. Please, continue to stay engaged about all the issues facing our kiddos. We want to all help move Franklin and get us in the best possible position for our kids. It doesn't end and begin just with dismissals and arrivals of traffic. So, with that, I'll open the floor up for questions, comments. We'll start online with the Vice Chair, McNeil.
Thank you. And here, here to all that you said. First off to Lucas and your entire team, I want to say thank you, and to all the administrators, staff, teachers, parents, and students, yeah, thank you for just all the work you've been doing this, during this past, you know, their first week of school. And this first week has been years in the making, really, in terms of their redistricting process, how it's all come to this point, and it's a tremendous undertaking, and of course, you know, there's going to be some growing pains in the beginning, that's to be expected, and it's understandable, something of this magnitude, but I think it says a lot about you, your leadership, and the entire team all the way down, that you're able to acknowledge the challenges that we're facing and then pivot and be flexible, and the improvements that we're seeing, you know, 40 minutes in some cases over the course of the first week. I think that's fantastic, so I'd like to congratulate you and thank you on that. Yeah, and so like, like to ask the community, you know, please continue to have patience and grace, as, as Chair Callahan said. Now, this is, it's going to be, you know, some challenges that we're facing as we're going through this process, but just because something's hard doesn't mean that it's not worth doing, and this was still the right decision for our districts, our community, and our students. So, thank you again, Lucas, for this update and all the, all the work that you and everyone on down has been doing.
Thank you very much. And Gallagher?
Just, just echoing the same sentiments, but thank you so much for all of your hard
Thank you. Look here. Griffith?
Do we have time limit? It's a chuckle from the back. It's great.
Yes, we do. Yes.
You know, so I do think that, you know, the sentiment here is really important, you know, asking for grace from the community and making sure that there's recognition for the work being done. Also highlighting the growing pains, as Dave did, you know, there's going to be a lot of changes, there already have been a lot of changes, but I do want to make sure that the community also feels heard throughout this. You know, I think it is on us, we're, you know, kind of out there, we're getting the feedback, and the admins are getting feedback, and the administration's getting feedback. I think it's really important that as we ask the community for grace, we're also providing some kind of responses, we're acknowledging some of their concerns, and really kind of taking that to heart. It really is going to be a two-way process for us. And with that in mind, you know, there have been a lot of comments over the past week. I've had an opportunity to engage with quite a few folks. I really want to commend the parents for how they've engaged outside of a couple of situations, you know, even with the passion, even with the concern for their students, even with the concern for the community, it's really been about what can we do, or how can we kind of get through it and improve. So, with that in mind, you know, just kind of a couple of different points that I wanted to address that I've heard, you know, kind of out and about, some more directly than others. One of them, Colin, I think you can actually help out with this right off the bat, it's kind of a tee-up. There have been some discussions amongst some of the community about, you know, basically, if they knew things would be this kind of challenge when it comes to waiting in line, they would have taken the bus, and now they think that an appropriate response might be opening buses back up. You know, I know that we were very, very clear last year that the best way for us to try and deal with the traffic was going to be taking the bus. We're very clear that we have these deadlines in place so that we can plan. And I don't want to speak for you, but my assumption here is that really, there's so much more involved in trying to just open the buses back up. It's not as simple as just saying, hey, we're going to toss an extra kid here, we're going to put an extra stop there. If we were to truly open it back up and have people kind of fill back in, this would mean that we would have to rework everything essentially, kind of all at once, and it would be a little bit of chaos right when we're really trying to calm things down.
Yeah, that's multi-level of different challenges, I guess you could say. So, you know, we purposely created the bus registration on a timeline, so we would have the appropriate time to build a new route structure for the town before the school year started. So, we built that based on our registered riders. Over the summer, before our August 12th update, so from the time that registration closed on June 20th to August 12th, we received 125 more requests on a waiting list. That was wave one of requests while we were building routes. After, and yeah, you can see the chart here too, after, after our August 12th presentation, we received an additional 144 requests for buses after that. So, the amount of communication with a family to get somebody signed up, to get them registered, to get them in the system, to get them on a bus, already with a system that's designed from a population predetermined, is a challenge, but when you're talking about the volume of add-ons at this point, you're talking about capacity problem with what you can fit on a bus and where the bus needs to go. So, it's really a challenging thing to kind of add this many students or more students in a, in a short amount of time, because these routes have been designed with safety in mind, with efficiency in mind, with the number of students who were intending to take the bus initially. So, it's straining the system a little bit to do it, and, and I think that's one of the biggest challenges, opening it up at this point for a large amount more.
And I can appreciate that, and I think that's, it's really important for people to recognize, and the fact that you've been able to incorporate, you know, this many late registrants in the first place is impressive, and then, you know, getting 2,576 kids, you know, where they need to go on a regular basis is definitely a challenge. It does also touch on something else that has been brought up concerning seat availability and crowding. You know, I know, these are anecdotal stories, we don't have parents standing on, you know, sitting on the bus, but there have been multiple comments that people have made regarding their kids having a seat on the bus or being told to stand, you know, until they get to the first stop, or just, you know, one, one last little stretch. So, I wonder if you could expand again. You know, I know that we had the conversations in the spring and early summer around the targets for the buses. I know that we build in cushion, you know, we basically build in roughly 10 seats or so, and that even with a lot of the, you know, basically, we build that in so that we can accommodate these additional late registrants. But, you know, what is it, you know, that we can really kind of say and explain to the parents that we're doing to make sure the buses are properly positioned? And is this one of those situations where, you know, it can't be the always the simplest answer, but if students are unwilling to move over, it looks like there's less seats on the bus versus there actually not being enough seats?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that when we presented to, we had a functional capacity that we worked with with a different level. So, at elementary level, we typically try to get no more than 69 students on a bus for middle 62 and the high school 60. That's kind of our working level for functional capacity. The bus actually has 77 seats on it. So, you know, we work with that for a variety of reasons as far as why we choose those numbers for functional capacity, but looking at our current registered riders, our 2,576 riders right now, we only have four buses that are over that initial functional capacity that we designed. So, still under the 77-seat capacity, so there really shouldn't be anybody who is sitting on the floor or having to stand. As far as registered rider, riders go, we have the seats available for them.
Excellent. And I think that's, that's really the important thing that, you know, I want to make sure parents are hearing, where the design takes into account multiple things. First off, we're not trying to say 77 seats exist in the bus, put 77 kids on there, there is that room being generated, and we do have it in an age-appropriate fashion, where, again, understanding, elementary school students tend to be smaller than middle school students, who tend to be smaller than high school students, and we do take that into account. So, I think it is one of those points where, I don't know whether it is a conversation to have at the, you know, the administration level of the schools, but really reinforce in the idea that the open space next to you is a seat. It is not a spot just for your backpack, it is not a spot that if you don't want to sit next to somebody, you get to just kind of hold up. We have the buses designed safely for this number of students, and we need to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to sit down. So, admins, I don't know if we're going to have the opportunity to just kind of enforce that, or, you know, make those kind of announcements, but I think that is definitely one of those big points that I've heard that concern from multiple parents, so I want to make sure that we have that opportunity. I can go on for a little bit. Do you want me to take a quick pause?
Well, we, we'll go down.
Okay. All right, we'll come back. Have fun.
So, thank you. As I had mentioned during the last update, where we talked about busing and how we improved from last year to this year, it shows the talent, skill, the willingness to do better of this group, just how things have gotten better. Thank you for showing this data, because it helps, because I think for people, perception is reality, and without something to give them what reality is, they make things up. So, it's good to see where we started at our worst to where we are improving, and I mean, was there like, what, 40 minutes was one of, one of the biggest drops, I think? So, kudos to you, because I think we all hear...
Kudos to them.
Well, kudos to the, yes. We all hear the negative, but once the right things are done, people rarely say, yes, things have gotten better, because I can tell you right now, I don't, I rarely, I rarely heard, read, or heard from people that had said, yep, things are much better now versus day one. So, so thank you all for all the hours, the time, the thought, the commitment, the whole As I think my colleagues have said, this year is going to be a year of bumps, and I think we all just have to come in expecting bumps to happen, but it's how we react to those bumps, and you are all showing that you're reacting extremely well, extremely intentional to those bumps, but it's going to happen, people. It's like riding a bike for the first time, you're going to fall down, scrape your knee, you just got to pick yourself up and do better, and next time, avoid that bump and not fall down again, you know? Put on a helmet next time. You don't know. There's a lot of things that we don't know, that we couldn't have planned for, anticipated, we were going to come and deal with it for the first time and then react. So, I think, as has been said... So I think, as has been said, you all need to be given grace for that. Colin, thank you for this data here, because I think this also is a point that I had a question on, is we know the buses do cost money, but there are families that get the buses for free because of distance. Do we know how many families that are eligible for free buses that are taking advantage of that versus driving? Because I think that's part of this whole situation. The community can help reduce some of this traffic, if, so do we know?
Are you asking more of how many families are qualified but don't take advantage?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, we have this statistic, it's 253 students that qualify that don't take the bus.
Okay. So I think families, if, going forward, I know it's too late at this point, but I think going forward, if you are getting a free bus, take that opportunity, because this will help with some of the congestion, and just make things a little bit easier. One recommendation I would have is maybe next year, for families that are eligible for free busing, we really over-communicate to them and really kind of emphasize they should probably take the bus versus driving, and just to help with some of that traffic congestion, because we know it's going to happen. Last thing I had was... Nope, I think that's it, so, cool, thank you.
Thanks, I actually live on Oak Street, so I got to kind of walk my dogs and walk around. I will say, like, and I heard this from the community too, teachers, you know, kids being dropped off by their parents, just, it gave me such, like, I went out there to be like, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to give, you know, Lucas and everyone a heads up on like what I'm seeing. I didn't have to be there, Lucas was there earlier than me, Colin was there, and that's like what, like, I should have expected, is like, they ran around making sure they watched everything in person, and we saw that. So I think like, just the fact that, you know, we kind of can be reassured that you guys are just showing up, and so, thank you. I will say, the enthusiasm that Lucas spoke about, and I've felt it from the parents when I'm at the field, or just, I talked to, like, everyone, I had dinner the other night with a woman at Ichigo Ichii, who was sending me videos of Lincoln Street, like, parking lot, like, what's going on, all in like, really good faith, like, hey, do you guys know it's getting crazy over here, we need your help? And like, there's a lot of parents out there with like, really good attitudes right now, so I know that you don't always hear from them, but it's good to hear that some of them are actually sending emails to you all and everything, you recognize that. To Paul's point about the buses, because this is something that as, as some parents sort of have like, elementary school and then go into middle school, and they don't expect their kids to like, come home and give false narratives of what's going on, that does happen. So if somebody did have a bus story or a bus concern, who is it at the school that they should reach out to? Like, if it's at, like, Lincoln K2, should it be that vice principal, that teacher? Like, who's the best person to say, hey, my kid says the bus is over capacity and he has to stand? Like, who's the best person to verify? Because I think parents, I'm not saying don't trust your children, but please verify the information before you go onto like, Facebook, or, you know, write a ranting email to the, one of the admins, because more often than not, you're going to have a little bit of pride on your face, because like, I do, I do think that kids' perceptions aren't always like, spot on. Would that be the teacher?
I would say transportation questions in general should go to Colin directly around that. I think if there's a specific situation on a daily or an afternoon where there's something reported from a child about something that either occurred either on the bus, you usually start at the school level to report it, and then it will escalate and get to the right person depending on the, depending on the situation, so. And I want to emphasize, we purposely put this out now during this, so that we could just, we knew that this was a driving point that you wanted to discuss in the meeting. We will transition to other phases, and I hope we can focus on that when we get to it. But I will say, by and large, I've been really impressed, our community has come out, the kids are excited, and I have children in the district as well, very excited about the school year, and I just think, you know, I don't want to overemphasize a few negative people who've demonstrated that with the good that we've seen throughout the community and the patience and grace we have seen. We're communicating at a level as fast and as, I'll speak for myself, as much as we can put out, we are communicating at a level. I'm hoping things settle down, and we've addressed and will continue to make adjustments, but ultimately, transportation every year, yep, last year we had a different problem, as, you know, we don't have to rehash that, but I just think every year that I've been in the seat, we have talked about bus transportation, so I just don't want to latch too hard to the fact of this being a reorg issue, as opposed to, there's pieces of this that exist every year. And in addition, we're dismissing larger groups of kids, so there will be a new normal of adjustment to have that happen, and I think we're getting there. So I hope that that gives some clarity on kind of where we're at, as far as the district leadership team.
Yeah, and I think that some people just were chomping at the bit to be like, I told you the district was hard, like, some people just like, weren't really accepting of it, so I kind of expected this. Super impressive, the numbers around, there was, you know, 269 students that were registered after the fact, and we still got them onto buses, so fair point, Colin, you're dealing with a lot. The one question I do have is, because I understand what happened with the Panther Way restructuring of the one-way, because I was one of these parents that would cut through there, because that's where I live on Oak Street, and I would be driving on the wrong side of the road when, when the timing was off and the parent pickup lane was covering. That's what's going on at Lincoln, and I don't know if that was always what happened at Lincoln, but that's the videos I got, and that's the concern I got, so I didn't know if like, someone was going to help us out with the... What happens is like, people come so early to get their kid, they line up, and there's only one lane. So what happens is people drive on the wrong side of the road to people who are not in the parent pickup lane, who want to get past it.
There's signage that's been added now to have people take a right into the Looper Lot, is that what you're referring to?
No, it's like when they're on Lincoln Street, so it might be like, just something the town's going to have to help us out with in the beginning or something, yeah.
We can probably talk offline and try to get more clarity.
Yeah, it's the same thing that used to happen on Panther Way, to kind of stop like, backing up, we're lucky on Oak Street because there's two lanes, so you can kind of go up the right and go around if there's a parent pickup lane that's way up, so that's all. Yeah. But yeah, thank you, thank you everyone.
Yeah. Thank you to Lucas and that we did a great job, and I spoke with the displaced parents on day one versus day five, even most of them are happy, yeah, everybody understood the first two days are very tough days, and being onsite at 6:00 in the morning for Lucas and team is not an easy job, so the folks out there, we understand their aggravation. And one question I have is in the middle school car traffic, what is the best we could do for the middle school traffic at 3:00, 3:00 P.M.? What are the best we can do to reduce the congestion of the old traffic?
Reduce traffic...
Middle school, middle school car traffic.
Middle school car traffic. It has been improving, and if you, are you talking about afternoon specifically? Yeah, so the times are improving, we anticipate it will continue as well. We also encourage families too to take advantage of the second area, which is kind of behind the ECDC area, is a designated drop-off and pickup area as well, so if there is, if there is an opportunity to do that, you should do that as well.
I think they're in pretty good shape as far as timing.
Middle school, yeah, that's the only I'm happy thing I get about middle school car traffic, that's all, thank you so much, each of you.
Thank you.
And actually, yeah, just in regards to with the ECDC, or like, the ECDC at Oak now, I know like, day one, I don't think anybody took advantage of it, was that correct?
No, I saw Cory Cox, he was out the back door, I think I was the only car that pulled in.
Very few people moved to utilize that.
Yeah, I think I was one of them.
I'm not going to count you in that sample size. And then, has that improved over, okay?
So if you're coming, so just PSA, you know, if everyone does it, it's not really a secret anymore, but if you're coming from St. Mary's, and you pass the senior center, but you don't want to enter into the high school, middle school areas, you could take a left at ECDC at 7:15 in the morning, and you could get, you could drop off there and then pull away and go back out towards the common, you could do that. Especially if you have a seventh or an eighth grader who has a classroom in that wing, that's a pretty direct route.
Thanks. Maybe I can speak with Franklin Matters and others, try to get that word out there too, to really kind of screw that up. Two other things, and we'll kind of circle back around. So I know, so as has been discussed, can't reopen the bus routes, they are what they are, so to be able to kind of also try to mitigate some of the traffic, carpooling is the next best alternative. Are there any ways in which we can kind of incentivize carpooling?
I'll answer that one. We did not build a plan that included incentivizing, there's no, like, a reward system for that, we encouraged that, we just think as a community, if you are driving and it makes sense, I think the reward would be, I know when I've carpooled for different things in my life, it's been at the benefit of not having to drive the next day. Or if my daughter has practice in Taunton, it's like, just be the one who's going to drive out to Taunton, stay, and then drive them all home, and then, so I think like, internally, people could be thinking about it that way, that's something I would suggest as far as it. The school's not going to incentivize like, premier parking, special schedules, like, anything like that, but ultimately, I think there is some benefit to those who could work a schedule out with a trusted family that they want to engage with, I think some are doing that, and I think that's really a family decision to do, but I would encourage it, certainly, the less cars that drive up the loop, I don't think anyone's going to complain, I'm looking at the crowd, I don't think there's a problem there, so, yeah.
Fantastic, all right. Circle back around.
You know, so appreciating some of the additional comments that were provided, actually one by Al really struck me, you know, looking at the number of parents that aren't using, that aren't signed up for buses and that could, especially if you have, you know, are far enough away. And I think what that doesn't necessarily capture, the number of parents who may be signed up for busing but still aren't using it, and I think there's, you know, there's plenty of different reasons for that, but one of the things that has been brought up to me a couple of times is actually with regard to one of the Washington Street buses, that goes all the way, I think it's Bus 2, that has a very long route, and it's been really, really close to whether it's starting speeding to school on time pretty consistently this week, and I know that there's a lot of things being worked on from the school perspective, but I think this bus, actually I believe, one of the parents really kind of mapped it out and like, followed it along, to try and understand how much of this is outside of our control, right? Where everything's planned well, plenty, you know, plenty of room for the kids on the seats, no issue getting into the school, but it's a matter of the complexity of the route that they have, the number of like, major intersections they're getting held up at, and basically you think you sit at the wrong intersection, two cycles, and now you're five minutes late to school. So that was one of the concerns that have been brought up, I don't know if we have a way that we can look to try and address that, whether it is changing their approach to the school, whether it's changing timing, or just kind of shuffling a couple of things around to make sure that we don't have close calls when students get in.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll take a close look at that bus particularly, I mean, each elementary zone has its challenges as far as transportation goes, particularly in Washington, there's areas where it's farther out from the school on one side and less populated, and then the other side is more populated, and so to kind of, again, meet the needs of the entire picture, you know, there are some challenges with that, but we'll take a closer look at Bus 2's route specifically.
Awesome, yeah, and I think that's really, that's fantastic, and I think that's really what people are hoping for, is that when we do see the challenges, as we've done all week again, you know, it's been reiterated multiple times, there has been a response, I think these are just, you know, making sure that we have these chances for people to kind of hear that either it's solutions in the works, or we actually have something that has been done. There was also discussion around extra drop-off time in the morning for schools, this is something we had talked about beginning of the summer, and it seemed like it was one of those ways that we can really try and kind of help out in the morning, especially with making sure all the students are in, kind of, for the elementary schools, I don't know necessarily for the middle school, but getting them kind of in and having that wider window so that we can try to have the flow of traffic. Was there a reason, because I know we had talked about that, was there a reason that we had not gone down that route?
We discussed as a team, it would be easier to add something like that if it was needed versus start something and then not need it, and then take it away after people have built the structures. That was one of the talking points that we had. Two, we were waiting to see, obviously as we live this over the next few days, we'll come up on a two-week mark of trying to really get assessments of how are we doing? As we've seen the trends and we've made, the strategies that the team has put together have shortened the time, we really wanted to determine whether there was a need to do that before we were going to commit to staffing. It's still a part of discussions that we've had internally as a team, and certainly, if that decision is made, it'll be based on the data and the information we have, but at this point, we're still reviewing our processes and tightening it up to get a true baseline of like, what is the arrival and dismissal time, so that we can work forward, but we are discussing that still.
Okay, so it's not that it's not happening, it's just you want to make sure we have exactly what's going on first, and then if we're able to alleviate some of those challenges, it is an avenue that we have.
So we made a decision not to, and then we're now, as I mentioned at the beginning, was really monitoring and making adjustments as we go, but that has been some, a topic of discussion the team has continued to have as well, of should there be a need once we settle into the year? I think that's pretty, I'm getting some head nods, I think that's pretty accurate, okay?
Yeah, that sounds good. With the YMCA bus, are we squared away with that, and there were a couple of questions and emails that came through that got forwarded on, do we have that, kind of an answer for the parents involved there? You know, do we have a dedicated YMCA bus after school heading over there? Are we partnering with a bus route that we already have established?
Yeah, so the initial, the initial plan and our projection was to have one designated bus. After we got our registered riders, we found out, working our routes, that it made more sense to have two half-buses, that would be more efficient than one bus going to one school and then having to go to another with timing, withholding kids, with all of that information, you know, the logistical piece, but then also to add a layer of efficiency there, half the bus with the enrollment that they have that are going to our schools, it made sense to also pick up as we go to the school and vice versa. So the plan changed at that point, once we got our registered riders and got our information from the YMCA and working with the bus company.
Okay, so then for, in the afternoon, is there just a single bus who goes? It's the same two buses that basically, each one swings by the Y, drops students off there, and then continues on with the routes? Or the other way around?
Yes, yes.
But there are, there's a dedicated...
It's built into, it's built in as an addition to a route we have.
Okay. All right. And then actually, there's a few things, but I don't want to belabor this forever. One of the things that I think has been brought up a couple of times is, you know, the concern around traffic in multiple occasions, whether we're looking at Lincoln Street, whether we're looking at Oak Street, or Washington Street, and, you know, I think we had had the discussions, again in the spring, I feel like I can just put that line on repeat, there were certain things that we could do in the window of time without significant capital expenditures to really help control the flow of traffic as best we can within our purview, right? I know that that, I think the things that we were able to pull off are actually pretty impressive, some of the different changes we made, you know, around Panther Way, the different approaches we have for middle school, things like that, but when it comes to traffic off-site, would we be able to engage a little bit more with the town and see if they'd be willing to provide support when it comes to either a police officer, especially maybe put as a note, next year, first day of school, have a cop sitting at each one of the entrances? You know, I know at Lincoln, the challenge there is there's no traffic light at the only entrance on and off-site. At Kennedy, that was, you know, significantly smaller, we had a traffic light that helped to move things a lot better. At Lincoln, there's none, right? So anyone making that left turn, have, you know, it's a bit of an adventure, I know making a left turn into the school you can't do, we're, you know, I think that was well established, but making the left turn out, I think there's going to be plenty of challenges associated with that. So if we could communicate more with the town, seeing if they can provide some kind of police detail, and also seeing if we can't get some kind of support when it comes to how people are driving through those zones. Got to say, I remember, I lived in Georgia for a short period, complete, you know, sidebar here, I apologize, but there was a big school zone at the bottom of a long hill, three days a week, there was a cop at the bottom of that hill. You never knew which three, changed every single week, and every single week he had somebody. And no one, you could always tell the folks from out of town, because no one sped through that school zone. 20 miles an hour on the dot, right through the hallway, traffic backed up as far as you can see, but no one ever sped through it, and I think if we had some of that commitment with the town, getting some more of that engagement from them, it would really make sure that the areas are safe. Lincoln, again, there's no, there's no signal there, so anyone crossing the street, you know, there is a risk if cars are going through there quickly. Oak Street and the high school, there's just a ton of regular traffic in that area, so when we have all the students out, when we have all the cars, you know, moving through, having that kind of enforcement from the, you know, from the town through the police would be helpful, I think, and might be able to really kind of get us a little bit more a safer condition. Long rant, went to Georgia, came back. Long rant, went to Georgia, came back. And I think everyone's ready to stop talking about transportation. I've got some other points. So anyone watching who emailed us some other topics, we are going to have some discussions after the fact, but I do want to make sure that we get home sometime before 11:00, especially for the admins who are happy to finally not have a very long week of lifting things. So stop there. Twenty minutes.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Online? I'm good. All right. And actually just one, two other things. Paul was kind of talking about some of those like long term, you know, I know we kind of talked about like no cost, low cost, and some longer term ones. When, Colin, when you had presented out the capital improvement document, which again is just spectacular, it talked about some maybe longer term, like alternative routes or some other kind of capital improvement in like projects that might be down the horizon. Is that something we're still kind of looking at entertaining?
Absolutely. We're analyzing this all the time, every day, and as we live this and learn more and experience it, we're going to, you know, reflect on what was initially involved with the beta traffic study and some of the alternative recommendations, look at the data that we're looking at right now and how we're living it, and really come up with what is the absolute best solution for us.
Fantastic. I'm really excited. Again, thank you all for the work that's gone into this. One last one, because I had a constituent promise that I asked this, at the elementary breakfast one, is it possible to pick up just a cinnamon roll and not the apple slices? Or do they have to get both?
You need the fruit. You don't need the milk, but the milk is optional, but you need the fruit.
Milk is optional. Thank you very much.
You could have learned with that question before we got into the congressional hearing on traffic.
All right. Fantastic.
Okay. So we're going to burn some sage, going to clear the air on traffic. We're going to move into the exciting part of the agenda. There's two things that will, three things that I'm excited about. The first is Mr. Penza's here, he's going to present on the Portugal trip as he makes his way up. After Mr. Penza's presentation, we'll introduce our new administrators and the new roles that they're in. And then we'll get into our district improvement plan and have the team come up and rotate. I'll talk more about that later. So in the essence of time, I'm going to kick it over to you, Mr. Penza, to share.
Look at you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I've come here to ask you once again for your permission to take some students on some world travel. Franklin High School has a proud partnership with EF Tours going all the way back to June of 2001. We've done over 20 tours globally and in tying in with the Portrait of a Graduate and the Global Student and the Global Thinker, I'm here to ask for your permission to take some students to Portugal, our first Franklin High School trip to Portugal. We were very thoughtful, working with EF Tours to keep it within the parameters of April vacation, so it'll be a Saturday to Sunday trip. We will not be missing any school days. And we will be flying into Porto and heading down to Lisbon, and then the beautiful seaside UNESCO World Heritage Site of Sintra, and then finally along the beautiful coast of Cascade and making our way back home to Franktown, USA. Do you have any specific questions about the trip itself? I shared with you a general itinerary, if you want the specific itinerary, I have that as well, I can share that with you at a later date. And I'm in the process of building out the parent and student presentation that we'll be showing with them on Tuesday, September 30th.
All right. I'll open the floor for questions.
Nine days to Portugal?
Yes.
Only Portugal already?
What's that?
Only Portugal?
Just Portugal, just Portugal. I, this most recently, we went to Southern Italy, we did Rome in Southern Italy, and then in April, we took students to Vietnam, Cambodia and Thailand. I will 100% go back to Cambodia in this lifetime, life change and experience. And then this will just be Portugal, it'll be nine days in Portugal.
No questions. Thanks for doing this every year. I remember from last year, and I know we have it covered with this travel company, so.
They're the best.
Yeah.
Nope, no questions.
Do we have a timer? Take it away. Really excited to see this, and I think it's a fantastic and somewhat less traveled region of Europe, so looking forward to hearing more about it. One of the things in my mind that I remember coming up multiple times with some of the prior trips is the overall cost and what kind of systems we're going to have in place to make sure that, you know, students really have this opportunity, you know, and that it's a broader net that we're casting. I didn't see anything in the presentation on that. In particular, I know that we have things broken up, but if there are ways, you know, breaking up the overall cost is one approach, but sometimes even then, that full bill is not small. So I want to make sure, like, I know that the tour group has done this, again, you've done a great job of really kind of listing it out. But for anyone listening in, anyone who's done it, who's looking to do this for a first time, just making sure that we're very clear that there are options, don't just look at the cost, there are other approaches to it, and making sure that we have outreach for that.
So fortunately, because we've done so many trips, we've earned credits with EF, and we can use those credits to provide student scholarships, I guess in a sense. So we're in the, we're in the process of working with Dr. Weber of building out procedures and processes for students to apply, and then a way to reward those students and award students. There's also the Global Citizen Scholarship, which is up to $1,000. They can also set up their own tour fundraiser page. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it as accessible to students as possible, and also do set up fundraisers to help offset the overall costs for students as well.
That sounds fantastic. And that scholarship, I think, is really, you know, that's, that's a huge point. So, you know, I'll be very interested to hear more details on that as you're able to get those together. Thank you.
All right. Vice Chair McNeil?
No questions from me, thank you.
And Gallagher?
No questions from me, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much for putting this all together, and it's been terrific to kind of see EF kind of grow over the four years that I've been, been on here. And especially, I love that we are now that partnership with the credits, it's terrific. And I love how everybody's kind of getting on board as well, just for different parts all over the place. So that a way, as now I'm a, got a high schooler somehow, and, but it's terrific to be able to kind of now look forward and say, all right, well, we got this one on the horizon, this one after that, this one after that. So families can kind of go and take a look and whatever might spark their, their interest, start knowing that, you know, the costs are typically, you know, kind of comparable from one trip to the next, but now we can kind of start planning ahead and kind of looking forward to it. So this is terrific, and thank you very much.
We are also working on a website, myself and Dr. Weber, we're working on the EF website, kind of the partnership to provide the community, students, parents, the opportunity to see where we've been, where we're going, and then the proper procedures and to kind of join in and share in this experience.
That's amazing. Thank you very much.
If I could just add, we've really worked hard to long range plan, I know that's one of the areas where we've typically, I can think back to my first year in this seat, we were about a year out, we were getting approval in April for the next April. If you look, this is April 2027. It's like 20 months or something, I don't even know, but.
It's one year and seven months.
One year and seven months. So I think what we've tried to do is look more long range. That was feedback I think we've received over time from the community, from the school committee, from internally our discussion. So I think the more we can push out and start to, and I think this website will be a great way for people to see and look ahead to budget, to plan, and, you know, if you know what's coming up, you know, a high school student who's going to be there for three years, four years, four years, but I'm thinking about incoming freshmen, you have other things you're worried about. So I just think like that's the idea we're trying to move towards.
All right.
Talking about the fundraising page, what fundraising page is that going to create by ourselves or?
So there's kind of a different, couple of different things. First is travelers earn credits with EF, and then those credits can be used for different things. Teachers, because of laws, are not allowed to use those, so we put those into a general account through Franklin High School. And then we can tap into that general account with those earned credits and then award scholarships through that. There's also the Global Citizen that's offered through EF, it's up to $1,000, and they, I think they offer $100,000 every, every year annually to trips. And then the students can set up their own fundraiser page, almost like a GoFundMe through EF, and they can solicit donations. So if they're shoveling driveways or raking leaves or babysitting, they can have community members kind of pitch in and help offset costs through their own individually set up fund, page, fundraiser page. And then we also will be doing fundraisers as a collective group, whether it's Chipotle night or burrito night or local community, to get the community members to somehow kick back in and help offset the costs for these students so they can travel.
Yeah, going with a GoFund page, it will cost a lot of money for the students, like having a private website is totally different than what we're talking.
It runs right through EF, so EF helps them set it up, and it's, and they, they fund it, they host it, so they do all, they do the site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll take a vote on that later in the evening. All right. So next, I want to do some new admin introductions, just to introduce some of the new members of our team and new roles. And many are here tonight, some could not be with us tonight for a variety of legitimate reasons, and we will still introduce them and welcome them to our team. We've had a really, really strong summer of planning, as we've talked about many times, but I just wanted to introduce some of the folks that are in this room and beyond. And I'll ask you, when I say your name, if you could just stand up and be recognized and then I'd like the team, I'll read off, I have approximately six names to read, and I think four are here, if you could just come and join the group as you come up. And maybe actually come stand near me, okay? You can stand right near the microphone. We're going to start with Jillian Swanson. Ms. Jillian Swanson. She joined Franklin Public Schools in 2018 as a lead teacher in the extended school year program. She became a team chair in 2021 and held that position for four years. After successfully participating in the MSAA William James College Leadership Licenseure Program, Jillian secured her administrative license and transitioned to ECDC as the assistant principal on July 1st, 2025. Jillian brings multiple years of experience in the field of special education, including roles as a classroom teacher in grades pre-K through six, working with students in a variety of special needs, with a variety of special needs. Jillian's dedication and passion to young students and how they learn, along with her ability to establish strong relationships with all stakeholders, will serve her well in this new role. She has hit the ground running and is excited for the year ahead. So once again, welcome Jillian Swanson. Next, Kristin Ray. Kristin Ray is a dedicated educator and instructional leader with over two decades of experience in elementary education. Previously, she served as an elementary math specialist and an elementary teacher in Franklin, Massachusetts. She is an instructional leader known for her commitment to equity, inclusive excellence, and data-informed teaching practices. Kristin has taught in grades two and three and led district-wide professional development in the areas such as MTSS, UDL, and math instruction. She has also served as a mentor, peer coach, and as a member of the academic leadership team. Kristin is passionate about fostering school culture, where all students feel valued and supported. She completed her principal licensure program at Curry College in the spring of 2025, and she is eager to expand her impact on children in our community as the assistant principal at the Lincoln Street 3 through 5 Elementary School. Next, I will recognize Ms. Mary Lynn Friedman. Ms. Mary Lynn Friedman, we should give her a round of applause. Is a new assistant principal at the Washington Street K through 2 Elementary School. A former speech and language pathologist, director, and team chair, Ms. Friedman brings a strong background in early childhood, special education, and leadership. Prior to joining Washington K2, Ms. Friedman served as the team chair at Oak Street Elementary, known for her collaborative spirit and deep commitment to young learners. She is already preparing for a strong year ahead, and we are thrilled to have, welcome her to our community and to our team. So Ms. Mary Lynn Friedman. Next, we have Katrin O'Rourke, if you could please come up. Ms. Katrin O'Rourke has joined the district as an administrator of student services at the elementary level. Since 2019, Katrin has served as a special education and general education administrator in Sharon Public Schools. She holds a master's degree in special education from Regis College and a master's degree in social work from Rhode Island College. Katrin has already hit the ground running, observing and supporting students and collaborating with teachers and administrators, and we are delighted to welcome her to our administrative team. Next, Ms. Rebecca Madi. Ms. Madi began her teaching career at Remington Middle School in 2003 as a seventh grade special education teacher. In 2008, she transitioned to the Annie Salva Middle School as a team chairperson, later earning her administrator's license and serving as assistant principal. In 2015, she became principal of Horace Mann Middle School. Becky now serves as administrator of student services for Franklin Middle School. Her extensive experience as both an educator and administrator and a special educator have been invaluable during the transition from three middle schools to one, providing steady support to administration, general education staff, and special educators alike. Welcome, Ms. Madi. Next, I have Ms. Lizzie Morrison. Ms. Elizabeth Morrison has joined the Office of Teaching and Learning as the Director of ELA and Social Studies. She brings nearly two decades of experience in Franklin, most recently serving as the principal of Annie Salva Middle School. Throughout her time in the district, she has demonstrated a deep commitment to instructional leadership, staff collaboration, and the academic and emotional well-being of students. Her background as a middle school English Language Arts teacher, assistant principal and principal have provided her with a well-rounded understanding of teaching and learning, curriculum development, and the importance of supporting educators at every level. Mrs. Morrison earned her master's in English Education from Simmons College and her master's in Educational Leadership from Endicott College. She also has a bachelor of science in ELA and Social Studies Education from Miami University, and we are thrilled to welcome her to the team, and her contributions have already been noticeable. So welcome, Ms. Lizzie Morrison. I wish Steve Sherlock was here because he would take a photo at this moment, and I think we should, Dr. Rogers. Can you take a photo of the team? Is it too dark there or are we good? Okay. All right.
Now, do they get to go home like the pledge students or are we?
I think you'll hear some of their voices tonight as we move, move, transition to the next topic.
I tried. All right.
All right. So I will kick this off. The format tonight, the way we are planning to do this is the rostrum is there. We have put together, rather than a presentation, this is a flip book, it's an actual document of our district improvement and school improvement plans. This team has worked tremendously hard to put this together. So what we will do, you will notice it'll be a bit fluid as we move through this book. Picture it like a magazine, as we flip the pages, different people will narrate some of the information on it. I've actually given a really challenging task to leaders. I've said to them, I need you to spend about two minutes on your section. That is not enough time to get into the depth and breadth of some of this. We steer this with you in advance so that you could read ahead. I do anticipate that we will do school tours, and that's where I envision a real deep dive, where you're being led by a principal and assistant principal through the halls of their building, looking into classrooms where they can really dive in deep. The purpose of tonight is really about trying to communicate our strategy and our goals for the school year as they relate to each of the schools in the district. Does that make sense so far? Okay. So without further ado, you'll notice, yep, table contest, there's an executive summary in here. In this year, we really tried to put together, basically despite the fiscal challenges, what we've experienced, we really have put together a really solid program for our children, support for our staff, and a plan moving forward of how we're going to really build new school communities across the board, whether it's pre-K all the way through high school. So I've hit on that in some of the executive summary. That really serves as the foundation of this work. As you look, the guiding principles, our core values and theory of action are in there. We've presented on those topics many times. And as we look at this timeline, if I could focus your eyes to 2025, that would really be where I would want you to be looking at. We've talked through the progression of planning. This year, we really needed to start and look at the, really starting high level, but by summer and into the fall, here we are, back on track to present to you all for this district improvement plan. But it took a lot of effort in the midst of a lot of chaotic times in the summer and in late spring to get to the point we are now, but we're doing it. Okay, the four goal areas, here they are. These goals were developed and are what I feel the most relevant, practical, easy-to-understand goals, and they really represent the work that we're all doing, whether you're at the district level, the school level, or at the classroom level. I think all of these things are happening all at once. So as a team, we've built our goals around these these large ideas, and I'll just hit on them briefly. The first goal that we have as a district, a school, a team, a classroom, is strengthening our school community and team collaboration. Every single school is trying to build communities. Some are brand-new, and the only one that's not brand-new is the high school, and they're continuing the work that they started last year around this, so it's not a new goal by by only one year, I think. So at this point, really, when we build communities, I think that's how our our schools will thrive, and each of the educators and the leaders that you hear from will talk a little bit about that. The second is building coherent systems and structures. It was mentioned before, this is not a piece of paper, a plan, a strategy, that has not had to have a new look and a refresh and a new set of eyes, whether it was just the title, or, and ninety percent of it had to be reworked in some way. So really, it's about looking at our systems and structures, and how are we building those out as we go. The third is aligning instructional practices, right? Where it should be aligned, are we doing that? So much work has happened over the past few, many years, to really coordinate across levels, and we're continuing to see that work. I think this evolution of our district and school improvement plans is further evidence of that, where you're gonna see some real alignment across grades, and I'll talk about that after. The last is communication. It's been brought up tonight, but ultimately, looking at how are we providing timely and transparent communication throughout the work. I've already seen evidence of that from all of our schools with their newsletters, the emails that they've sent home, other communications that have occurred, and will continue in that theme. Goal alignment, this is in there as a reference, but basically, what this shows on the left side is, of those four goal areas, every single school has goals under each of those four goal areas, and you can see some of the alignment. If you dig in a little deeper, I'll let them speak a little bit about that work. The last is the structural alignment. You'll notice this year, we're having each of the departments share their goals as well. That includes our finance, human resources, and operations, those were not included in previous years, we usually have like a one-goal sentence in there, they actually have plans that they put and baked into this as part of the team, in addition to all the school improvement plans that you've seen in the past. And that's our new reorganized visual of the district. As we move forward, we will do mid-year progress monitoring to get feedback on how we're doing on these goals. We do have measurable outcomes for each of them that we can talk a bit about, and then there's your glossary of terms, that's been asked of us before in the past. So ultimately, we're really excited about the work and what we've put together.
So, given the two-minute time structure, I'll just speak on behalf of Mr. Eric Stark and Ms. Lizzie Morrison, but they'll be here to answer questions as well, which is to give you a high-level overview. So the Office of Teaching and Learning has four goal focus areas. Our first being around supporting the establishment of common structured times amongst the various schools, so that might be common professional time, that might look like professional learning communities, that might be department meetings, that might be MTSS meetings, but throughout the whole entire district, there's a variety of levels, a variety of professional learning opportunities, collaborative engagement opportunities, and so what we are working to do is to develop a consistent professional learning plan for the year, and work with building leaders, instructional leadership teams within each level to ensure that there's real focused protocols, data structures, so that we're really looking at analyzing data. Moving into the systems piece, we've heard us talk for years about monthly tiered systems of supports, so really trying to enhance those different structures throughout all the different levels. I think with a reorganized school, we have a real opportunity to think about what's worked really well across various levels in schools, and then coming together into new school organizations, we can kind of pull from what worked really well in places and build on, build on some opportunities that we have and bringing some together. So at the core of this, the Office of Teaching and Learning will be building on the MTSS framework for the district, which will then lead to, you'll hear from the schools a little bit more about what that will look like for them. As we think about continuing to focus on high-quality instruction, universally-designed instruction, this is one of our most exciting parts, I think, is being in classrooms, looking at teaching and learning that's happening with, within those, within those day-to-day structures, and working with those curriculum leadership teams to analyze student data to inform those, inform that instruction, and having that be really data-driven, but doing some learning walks and with different groups of administrators, which we're really excited about following protocols as we get into classrooms to talk about instruction and teaching and learning. And then lastly, we are committed to high-quality communication strategies. I will say that we've sent out our first monthly newsletter today from the Office of Teaching and Learning, we'll be sending out monthly newsletters to the entire district moving forward to enhance kind of that communication, we're looking to embed some two-way communication strategies within that, and then also build our website out to house some additional information both for teachers and the community, so don't want to come there. I'll turn it over to Student Services.
All right, from a Student Services lens, so we have three goals for this coming school year, and we're continuing to focus on strengthening our inclusive practices and ensuring equity for all learners. We are doing this similar to the Office of Teaching and Learning, through professional learning for both special educators, educational support professionals, and related service providers regarding UDL practices, as well as refining specially-designed instruction. We're gonna work with our gen ed teachers and our special ed teachers on calibrating our expectations regarding data and making data-driven decision-making pertaining for students with disabilities, and, you know, aligning, making sure we're really looking at current performance baseline data, and then setting appropriate goals so that their the students are going to achieve and meet those goals. We, and to inform our instructional practices as well. And then another piece of this is, now that the schools are coming together, we want to make sure that we have consistent investigation procedures and processes, making sure everyone's using the same forms and the same language, and we're communicating with families and stakeholders clearly about expectations and outcomes. And through this, we will ensure that we have consistent and equitable practices for our students. And these goals not only support academic success, but also increase trust and consistency across our district.
The Business and Finance Department has one goal, which is building systems to promote clarity, consistency, and support across all cost centers. This year, our priorities include hosting training sessions to ensure for all cost center leaders to ensure a clear understanding of expectations and available tools, establishing regular communication through monthly check-ins and open office hours, providing real-time support and clarification throughout the budget cycle, and to address questions proactively, and delivering standardized budget documents and training to all cost center leaders, supporting timely and complete budget submissions with aligned narratives, and increasing transparency in financial decision-making and budget development cycles. We believe that these initiatives ensure that every dollar spent supports instructional goals and district priorities. We all know that a well-aligned budget directly advances educational objectives and student success while maintaining transparent, equitable process that enables better planning and use of the resources to support both our students and staff effectively.
So in human resources, we have one goal this year, and that is to formalize our hiring We have a variety of tools, forms, documents, processes that we use, but we've identified a need to sort of incorporate that all into one, one document that covers things from postings to descriptions, reference checking, screenings. We have several new administrators, and each person comes into a district with their own ideas and experiences, and so I think the time is now to kind of put this into place. And we will create this document by getting feedback from administrators, by reaching out to other districts who have already done this work, and, you know, by reviewing at different times with central office cabinet to get their feedback as well. And the goal at the end of this is to have a document that, that all administrators across the district will be using. Another goal or hope is that this will improve onboarding for new hires, will help to retain staff, and we want the document to be flexible enough so that if we end up changing our onboarding process from one type of software to another, that we're not reinventing the whole document, we're, we're, we want it to be flexible so that we can incorporate changes year to year, and hopefully, this is a document that will be useful to everyone and that we will review and monitor and change each year going forward.
For operations, we have three goals. Two of them are involving system and structures. The first one is to create and update district procedures for facilities, use and rental, transportation, and school facilities maintenance to align with policy updates and district best practices. We'll develop and implement comprehensive training and communication plans to ensure that these new procedures are easy to understand, easy to implement, and a way to monitor and update as needed. So standard operating procedures would be the the big update for this one. The second is system and structures as well, and this would be continued development of the FPS capital plan and multi-phase. So we kind of started this during the reorg process when we were assessing the different needs for space use, and this will kind of turn into, we went into the phase one, phase two, phase three, so as we are moving forward now, this will kind of just roll into a capital plan and multi-year plan to maintain facilities and make sure we are foreseeing what we're going to need in future years. So a big part of this will be developing the FYI 27 capital plan request and a multi-phase, multi-year document after that. The third objective is about enhancing communication, so providing clear, accurate, and easy-to-understand information that is readily accessible through a variety of ways to provide input, share opinions, and offer feedback. So a lot of this was done during the reorganization process, and we look to continue with information about the district and utilizing new technology and new, new ways to engage families and offer ways for feedback and two-way conversation for, for operations.
All right, we'll move into the school goals now, and Kim Taylor will come up and kick it off for the admin, and then I'd see that Carrie B. Savage and Stephanie Wasick are making their way up, so you have a pre-K through two round.
That was just so I didn't have to sit by myself. Thank you, everyone, tonight. I'm excited to share the goals for the ECDC for this school year. So our first goal is around strengthening school and communication and team collaboration, which is really very calculated work that we're doing because we are at two locations this year. We're really working on how to keep the community as one, which is what our theme is this year, on one team, one community, and two locations. So we've, we're looking at having a community and collaboration team in the staff in order to work on how are we going to keep our families connected, and how are we going to keep our staff and students connected as well. The second goal is around building coherent systems and structures, and we're going to be focusing on establishing aligned routines and systems between locations while keeping in mind that the buildings are different. So making sure that when we're communicating to families about the systems and structures and the staff about systems and structures, we're keeping the building populations and the building facilities in mind. So one school has a cafeteria, a big playground, and a gym, the other one doesn't, but yet we're still making sure that our communication around the systems and structures in both locations is consistent. And then we get into aligning instructional practices, which we are going to be focusing this year on deepening developmentally-appropriate practice for preschool and differentiating instruction using UDL. We're going to be involved in some directed UDL PD with a consultant from Bridgewater State University, so that will be part of our instructional practices and getting everyone on the same page, even though we're in two locations. And finally, we, again, with the two locations, the expansion, we're making sure that we are keeping communication consistent, and schools are receiving the same information about the ECDC, as opposed to one communication to one school, one communication to another school, because it keeps us cohesive and as one unit. If there's information that needs to be communicated to one or the other location, that is specific to that location, not for the whole community, but we're really trying to be consistent and thoughtful in communication being consistent across both locations. And then one of our other sub-goals around instructional practices is going to be about the use of data and assessment at the preschool level, and how we can further engage our staff in what the assessment practices in our current pre-K on my way curriculum looks like, and how that will affect student outcomes, and how teachers are using data in order to drive their instruction as preschool teachers.
Hi, good evening. On behalf of our K-2 administrative team, Mrs. Wasick and I are excited to be here, and on behalf of our Ms. Friedman and Mr. Duffy as well, to share our goals with you. Speaking specifically to strategic objective one, we have one goal, which is focused on community and team collaboration and partnerships, and that really encompasses staff, students, families, leaning into building and creating a sense of belonging for every member of our community, with really focusing on the successes of our, of our early learners. So through our areas of focus, we will lean into developing our core values for our building, looking at community traditions, and really gaining feedback on climate from all stakeholders across our community. For strategic objective two, we have two goals specific to that, both around systems and processes. The first one is really looking at our daily operations and scheduling, and how they intersect from lunch and recess to our master instructional academic schedules, and really looking at how do we maximize access to our resources with models and time, anywhere from our interventionists to our curriculum specialists with larger teams, I think a lot of our work is going to be, how do we maximize, maybe really efficient with our structures and our systems. This also integrates MTSS, and thinking about schedules for tiered supports as well, and the intersection of panorama is a tool in order to look at data and be data-driven, which we'll hear more about in terms of our practices. Our second goal, connected to this objective, looks at our routines in developing an MTSS model, and really looking at those tiered supports, again, the incorporation of an MTSS handbook, which will be a district-developed tool to sort of align our practices across all of our elementary schools.
And I want to add, again, I echo, I'm so glad to be here with Carrie and also Sam Duffy. I do want to mention, with her permission, Mary Lynn Friedman would have liked to have been here tonight, but she's at a wake, so she would have liked to be here as well. So the third goal is focused on instruction, and our goal is just simply to make sure that every child receives high-quality, inclusive learning every day. We'll do that by working together and using student data thoughtfully, and supporting one another and growing our practices. What that looks like, how we'll get there, is using grade-level team time, sometimes called common planning time or professional learning communities, to share common teaching practices, to look at data, and make decisions together. A lot of this is very intertwined, like Carrie mentioned, that stems from even a master schedule that really is driven by teachers having as much opportunities to work together as possible. Also, using student data to understand needs and to design added layers of support when needed for tier two and tier three instruction, for us to visit classrooms regularly in partnership with, you know, building-based administrators, but also offices of student services and Office of Teaching and Learning, to visit classrooms regularly and give feedback that's focused on ensuring our teaching is consistent and inclusive, and finally, offer training to ESPs, our educational support personnel, each term that connects back to connects back to district goals, so making sure, again, that too is inclusive and focused on instruction. And finally, communication. Our goal is to keep families and staff well-informed and connected by sharing timely and transparent and engaging updates about school events and routines and student learning. That'll include at least monthly, if not weekly, newsletters with families, certainly weekly updates with staff, an effort to keep our school websites and event calendars current and accurate, and to really maximize the use of our communication channels to provide timely updates and celebrate successes across the school community. Today at Washington, that included our first fire drill. When we were able to share, it was efficient and smooth, and also I shared some reflections from our K-2 learners, which included, we weren't scared, we knew it was a practice. The alarm sounded like a chicken, and perhaps my favorite was, hey, do you know my mom? So it was, I think, successful by all measures. So that's our last goal, focused on communicating the big events and the small moments, too.
Thank you. Next, we'll rotate in the three-through-five level.
Off-topic. I don't think there's much for us to say.
Good evening. My name's Evan Schellman, the principal at Washington three-to-five, here also representing Amy Harvey, our assistant principal there, and Katrin O'Rourke, assistant principal of Student Services Two at all the buildings.
Hi, Brad Hendrickson, principal of Lincoln Street three-to-five school, representing all the educators, staff, admin, families.
Students.
Students.
Yeah.
It's been a great start to the year, and we appreciate all the support.
Should we start our two-minute timer?
Go.
All right. What they said, thank you, any questions?
We're out. No, but seriously, like, now we're going to go over to, but the, when we went through this exercise and we started working on, they're very similar initiatives and action steps that we've created, similar to K-2, so if you want to kind of go.
Right, yeah. I mean, we're building something from scratch here, which is extremely exciting. And kind of when we went through this exercise back in early August, we knew that we wanted to have very manageable goals for ourselves, for our staff, students, starting off with community and communication. We're looking forward to building, you know, determining what are the values that we stand for at school, what are the expectations? And right now, we're kind of coming into it with an expectation that we have similar expectations, but wanting to go through certain exercises to start naming and putting values, you know, quantifying what it looks like to be a student, a three-to-five student at Lincoln or at Washington, or to be a staff member there. We talk a lot about communication in here, wanting to make sure that we're helping our community to be, to feel welcomed and informed as well. You'll also notice a thread through the goals around feedback, too, wanting to get feedback from community, from students, from staff. We've already really been doing a lot of that. We made some changes to our master schedule just today, changes to our emergency response because we had our fire drill today as well, so always wanting to get feedback. Then looking into the second around systems, building master schedules that promote, you know, equitable access to curriculum and, you know, making sure that all staff have access to the students they need to have access to. You know, yes, arrival and dismissal, getting feedback around that, but also our instructional support teams, common professional time, our response protocols, all types of protocols around like, you know, what does it look like to function successfully within these walls as opposed to where we've spent our time up until this point? And then also, we've got around structures and instruction, alignment, calibration are big themes, you know, making sure if we have, you know, the same curriculum resource, but it's been used at five different buildings with five different literacy specialists or math specialists. And, you know, now we have a chance to kind of come together and get into each other's classrooms, do some walkthroughs, as we talked about earlier, and calibrate and align how we're all using these tools. Also, like, being very intentional about how we use our common professional time together, math, literacy. We have an STE specialist position at the three-to-five level this year, so getting some scope and sequence and aligning with that type of curriculum. What else do we have? Has it been two minutes?
I think, you got it. I'd say, what, are we on three?
Yeah, I kind of busted through all of them. Community, communication, systems, instruction.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Here for questions.
Once we get through six, three, and nine through twelve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Middle school, coming in hot.
Hi, everybody. Craig Williams, principal of Franklin Middle School, proudly representing the administrative team of Becky Madi, our administrative student services. Danielle Champagne, assistant principal, and Cory Cox, assistant principal, very happy to be part of that team. Our middle school, we said on the first day with staff, we were challenged with something pretty incredible, to unify three cultures together, three very strong, unique cultures. But we asked the staff, who better than us? We have just a group of talented educators who are ready to lead our middle schoolers through some of the most challenging years of their lives. And so we're, we are very excited to do that, and we hit it right off the bat in building our community through collaboration. So we started with a day-in-life process that we created, where staff was able to dig into our expectations for each other and for our students at the middle level, and was able to help us really build those routines that are so necessary for when managing a building of a thousand students. We also asked our brand-new academic teams, nine in all, which is roughly, ends up being about fifty-four to fifty-eight teachers, to launch the school year, making sure that they're creating a welcoming and structured beginning of the year for our students. And now we're beginning the collaborative process of establishing our professional learning communities for both our, at the department level, in which our teachers will be able to meet with their grade-alike colleagues. So for example, our three, grade-seven science teachers will be able to meet with each other for six, every six days for sixty minutes to dig into the work there, as well as our academic teams being able to meet on a bi-weekly basis, too. So we took the time there and also wanting to make sure that we're establishing, like I said, those consistent teaming structures. We're looking to build a multi-tiered system of support teams that are going to be able to utilize that student learning data, behavioral, social, emotional, and academic data to make sure that all will receive a high-level support, where now, really at the middle level, we're so excited to be able to offer a routine, meaningful tier-two intervention cycles with the new positions that we have in place with our department heads, as well as our math and literacy and reading specialists. We're also looking, as, again, there's a commonality here in terms of our implementation of inclusive, high-quality instruction, really leaning on our PLC structures again, when they're planning, engaging units and assessments together, they're making sure that they're utilizing universally-designed practices, and then they'll be able to share those effective practices during that meeting time, as well as through classroom walkthroughs to help remove barriers for students. And then finally, implement a clear, multi-platform communication system. Like all of us, you know, I think what's very obvious with communication is more isn't always better. We are definitely, at times, feeling like we're drinking from the hose with all the information that needs to come out, so we're really trying to focus on how can we give the information in a way that's digestible, in a way that people will utilize it and not be overwhelmed by it, both for, in terms of how we're communicating to our staff, but also how we're communicating with our families as well. And so those, that's been a really, and, you know, in meetings with, for example, my PCC, our PCC this past week, just talking about ways in which we can build our cadence to really make sure that we're getting them the information that they have, but really making it two-way and making sure that they're able to digest that information. And so I think, I hope I kept it under the two minutes, but as I proposed to the staff on day one, who better than us, and at the middle level, as well as all the people behind me at, for Franklin, it's just who better than us to take this challenge on.
Hi, good evening. So hi, Maria Weber, principal of high school, and I'm here with Ms. Kristen Reed, our associate principal.
Hi, everybody.
Also joined with us in our gallery back there, we have Ms. Leanne Sullard and Mr. Michael Walsh, our assistant principals, and then unfortunately, I think Ms. Kathy Klein is at the same wake as Mary Lynn Friedman probably tonight, so she can't be missed. So for our goals and our means of strengthening school community and team collaboration, one of the things we're focusing at the high school, as you've heard of before, is our WIND block. And this day couldn't have happened at a better time because, and you've heard me talk about the WIND block a lot, I would say, this past year. So today was our first day of having students actually, having it actually run and having students choose their first time, their destination. So all fourteen-hundred-plus students and teachers managed to find their, where they were supposed to go, and it was, it was actually a very successful first day.
It was.
And that's thanks to the commitment of our WIND block. If I can take a second to acknowledge them and their great work. We had a member from almost every department in the building dedicate about a year's worth of their time outside of school hours, working on the development of this committee, and Kristen over here is a rock star in terms of learning our securely-flexed scheduling platform, so I want to thank her for that, but also the admin team and every single teacher and staff member in our building for making, you could tell I'm like super proud of this, and I know I'm going on and on and on, but I was, this was so important and such a big endeavor and such a huge accomplishment on the part of everyone in the building to make it work, from the secretaries to the students. So we're really happy, proud, and pleased that we had such a successful rollout today. So with that, we will be using our WIND block and focusing on WIND block on both the, its effectiveness in terms of how it supports students and also student engagement. So we will be working to collect both qualitative and quantitative data throughout the year to measure its effectiveness, both on academic success and support of students, as well as their engagement with the WIND block, but also how it impacts their engagement within their classrooms. So we'll be spending some time working on that and focusing on that. And for building collaborative structures to analyze grading practices with, Kristen will explain that goal in a minute, and improved instructional decision-making, we have made a huge coordinated effort to align our meeting structure and our agendas, from our biggest groups of meetings down to our smallest meeting groups, to very purposeful agendas that are focused on collecting data and informing us on the effectiveness of our goals, and also with the focus of making very productive, inclusive, and collaborative meetings, from the admin team to our larger faculty groups, to our faculty learning groups, principals' council, instructional support team meetings.
Common professional time.
Common professional time, which is new for us as well. So we're taking a very purposeful approach in our meeting structures and agendas this year. Yeah.
So I'm going to talk about strategic objectives three and four. The first one is aligning our instructional practices. As Dr. Weber mentioned, we are taking, we're embarking on a three-year journey through the examination of our grading practices. So our first year, our plan is to simply do a school-wide audit of what currently is happening within our building in terms of grading, both with philosophy, practices, equity, and consistency within our gradebook. So we're taking a look just at what currently exists, gathering that data in year one, so that then we can use that to inform our plans for the remaining two years. We're focusing on this because we really strongly feel it's time to look at our grading and our, the integrity of our grades, so that we can guarantee that every student that enters our doors has a grade that means something, that is consistent, that has consistent and reflects high expectations for all of our students. So that's our focus for year one, is just gathering that data. With regard to the enhancing communication, I think you've probably already heard about our new Panthers app. Hopefully, you've all downloaded it and have notifications on so you can hear about all the events. That is one of our big undertakings with this goal, is continuing our current newsletters, parent newsletters, student newsletters. We have a weekly staff memo that we've been issuing each week, and then adding in this new app to increase our engagement, both athletic events, but also other events like musical, you know, drama, concerts, and things of that nature. So we're really excited about the app we just met today, and we have a lot of really good ideas about how to engage the broader community, including our students, but also the members of our town as well. And in addition to that goal, we also have a specific goal with regard to our athletic programs. So our athletic director, Kara Ellis, is working on utilizing that app within specifically the athletic programs.
I'm going to say, trying to process all this information into two minutes. It's made us go over our heads because we didn't want to leave anything out. We're so passionate and excited about this work, and when it's our turn, answer questions, we're happy to do so. Thank you.
So just in closing, this is a collective commitment from our whole team. You heard each of the levels provide a very high-level overview, but ultimately, we are really committed to seeing these goals through, and we feel like these are the right goals at the right time for our district and for our students and staff. So at this point, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have at any level, just indicate who you'd like to hear from, and we'll do our best to answer the questions.
Thank you. And I just want to start, I know Superintendent Jagir, so many times when we kind of say, you know, this is going well, or, you know, we're so happy to kind of see the success of this program and that program, instantly, you immediately kind of shift and say, well, it's not just me, it's my team. And this presentation tonight, this document here, makes it just so abundantly clear. You do a great job, but you have an amazing team that's helping to support our kids, and thank you, every single one of you. And additionally, too, I mean, this document itself is fantastic. And I know we kind of briefly chatted about the idea of, you know, having a couple of copies in and around town, you know, downstairs, over, you know, Franklin TV, even at the senior center, where so many folks are kind of looking to say, well, you know, what exactly do the schools do? You know, I remember when I was in school and what it was. This document is an amazing resource, just to kind of tip the, tip of the iceberg, to say, here's all of the things that are happening all across the entire school operation, and it's remarkable, the work that you're doing, the goals that you're setting out to do, and also the quantifiable metrics to kind of deem success. So thank you, each and every single one of you.
Thank you.
And I'll open the floor for questions, comments?
Yeah, I think it's a great work and a great presentation. Only one question I have, some of the plan has been stakeholders' assignments of parents. Have parents already been assigned, or do they want to volunteer for the contribute towards the plan?
So the question is, when we say engage stakeholders, have the parents of the stakeholders, have they been pre-assigned? I think there's a variety of ways that feedback will be collected. I won't answer for everyone, but I'm imagining they mean their parent communities in their school. There are PCCs that do exist, is one example, but the broader community would include parents that are, families of the children that attend the schools, of the principals. I can say that pretty confidently.
That's all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I don't, I wrote down some things, so I'll just kind of fly through it. Some comments, and maybe some questions trickled in. On page six, just the initial, like, sort of overview of this presentation, on bullet point two, build coherent systems and structures, I personally want to say, like, I could, I could just, the conversations that I've been having in the community right now around budget, I'm just wanting to commit to you guys that this is like what I'm, this literal, like, establish predictable, transparent, streamlined systems, this is what I'm trying to do for the future of the budget. I'm trying to set a sort of fixed allocation going forward that you'll be able to have a predictable, transparent kind of budget to work with, because I think all of this, this entire presentation would benefit so much from that one factor. like, just knowing ahead of time, the year before, what to expect. So I just want to say that to all of you, that I'm committed to that. That's kind of what I'm, what I'm trying to work with the town council and finance committee on, and there's a lot of agreement in the community that this is like something that would like to be placed. So I won't go on and on about that, but we know budget's a problem, and this is something that would help you all. And as I watch this, and I, I kind of went quickly over the central office, Jana, Ken, I just want to acknowledge that you guys are, you have, you have an assistant, but the departments that you're covering with yourselves is tremendous also. So keep us posted, because I think that, I made a point in here that I expect at times there will be feedback. I love everybody, you know, Evan, you focus on this a lot, but the whole, everyone's presentation talked about, like, gaining feedback, and I think that's something that is critical in this moment, just to kind of be able to kind of pivot and move and make changes. I expect that there's going to be times when feedback is going to be given to you all that makes sense, and that you would be very willing to implement if you have the bandwidth, you have the manpower, you have the resources, you have the financial support necessary, things that you know would be good for students, that you just can't pull off, and sometimes you got to say no. Let's try and track that stuff, because that's opportunity cost for the district. And as we continue, we're not going to be able to go too long without trying for another override in town. We're walking into a $2 million deficit this year, so this, the things that we're not getting as a town are going to be almost as critical as, like, selling the, what we could get, kind of thing. Just sidebar. I can't get my head out of budget, because all these things that you're doing and working so hard, and I just want to be able to support you with the resources you need. And then I just, I wanted to hear a little bit about the process of the Wind Block, because I know we did a presentation on this earlier. I, I'm just kind of curious for the parents who are new to learning what it is, because I get some feedback that I think might be not fully informed about unstructured time. And I think that this is not what the purpose of this is. I know it's not what the purpose of this is. So I'm, I'm curious, like, do the students choose at the beginning of the week? I should know this, I, I'm a ninth grader now, but like...
I can give you the brief rundown.
Yeah, it's like, what does the process of that look like? And what's the accountability that the kids are following through and showing up where they say they're going to? And it must be so chaotic, so I'm sure there's a system.
Well, today was not chaotic, so that was great. So yes, we have a system. So Monday serves as a home base day. So every educator in our building has a group of students assigned to them. We try to keep that as small as possible, and I believe we're about fif- fifteen? Fifteen, fifteen. So that's where, like, that's called home base, and that's that established connection that that teacher will have with those same fifteen students, hopefully over the four, four years. And then on Mondays, the teacher will work with the students to have them select what they need, so where, where they go on Monday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. So each educator in the building, from teachers to, you know, general ed teachers, content teachers, to special educators, to even our guidance and support staff, each has opportunities for students to join their block, to get what they need. So the primary focus is getting academic help and support, or make, we're finding, I think part of the premise behind this whole Wind Block philosophy is that kids are very scheduled after school, and our teachers go home, or work other jobs, or do other things after school that prevent them from staying beyond their contractual time, which is completely understandable. So this time that is embedded within the school day is giving students the opportunity to get what they need to be successful. And so it might be an absence where they need to finish a lab for a science class, they need extended time for a test, they want some extra additional support in going over some math problems or sequences before an upcoming exam, an additional review. We have our support staff running some mindfulness, mindfulness sessions. We often heard that, where is the executive functioning support for my non-IEP student? And so we're trying to put some of those opportunities in for kids during the day too. So the ultimate goal is to help them achieve even greater academic success, and also just be well-rounded students, and acquiring some of those skills that we talked about, those portrait of a graduate skills along the way, to just help them be the best possible student they can have, have the best experience, highest achievement that they possibly can, and be ready for their next steps after they leave. So it is very organized, and we do have a scheduling platform where attendance is taken.
Right, okay. Yep, I was just going to ask that.
Yes, to go back to that, we have, we have a scheduling platform, it's called Securely Flex. We vetted several of them, we like this one because it has an auto-assigned feature. So every student, if they don't choose, this is important. Every student will either choose what they need, or a teacher can identify, hey, I would really like to see this student because they've missed X number of classes, or I'm recognizing as the teacher they need a little extra help, and the teacher can override the student's selection and place them in their Wind Block. And then every day, the teacher uses the platform to take attendance, and then we have the same system, it's not an Aspen, it's a different platform, but we have the same system for generating a cut list, and then following up with students who perhaps didn't go where they were supposed to go. And let's hope that doesn't happen often. And it's important to note too, that this is a no-cellphone zone during Wind Block as well. We're considering it an academic block.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
That's all for now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And talk to us real quick before you leave. I just wanted to reiterate, when you talk about the, the Wind Block and the teacher that's kind of supporting those fifteen students, is one teacher through the entire high school experience? Like, the same teacher will be kind of following them?
Yes, the same teacher will, will follow.
Which is just fantastic. Absolutely, I remember that was, it was kind of brought up at some point in the past. I love, it's how we settled on, just be able to kind of go, see them grow, and just to kind of get to know them that much better from academics, but also the personality and a mental health aspect is fantastic. So thank you very much.
But, but, because then you don't have to come back around again. With the ECDC, the plan to, to become capitalists here at the school, is, like, where are we? Is that, like, for next year? Like, when, we thought about maybe that would expand into a situation where we get to offer that as like an incentive to municipal employees and it...
Oh, you're talking about childcare, staff childcare?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
ECDC, we had Kim ready to roll, ready to go up to the microphone.
Sorry, Kim, I didn't mean to scare you.
So, yes.
But, yeah, I know. I heard from people that said, Kennedy's open, does that mean we have town daycare now? And I said, whoa, whoa, no, like, no.
So we were really, really clear about starting the school year off, getting our school off the ground. That is on, as one of our goals. You did not hear tonight from Patty Gaye from Lifelong Learning, a few other departments that I'll have at a separate time. It was just too long. But ultimately, we, we are planning, that is still a goal that we have for this year to, to roll out, and we're continuing to, to plan that, but we needed to get this off the ground, obviously, as priority number one, so.
And I misunderstood that, I actually thought that was going to be under you, Kim, I did, not Patty, so, my bad.
To neighbors.
Not to scare you, yes. Okay, thank you, yes.
Cool, thank you. So very impressive, thirty-one pages of content that you all put together. So once again, a lot of thought, a lot of preparation, so, so kudos to all of you that have been part of this. Appreciate the abbreviated version, just, just a feedback of the presentation. I know we are your audience, but I also want us to keep in mind that the families that are watching on TV, online, those that may be here, don't have this context. So I think if we kind of focus more on those learning styles, so that they're, because it was a lot of information, just to try to read if they were trying to watch it online. So something to keep in mind going forward, like, how do we, if we're making it shorter, may not necessarily give the whole presentation to have slides or something, so that it's easier for them to follow, because it's a lot.
We could have done that, we probably would have presented you in November. The goal is to get the goals out, because we're starting them to start the year. I think it's a, you know, I think you would have given different feedback if we had done it.
Yeah, there's, there's no winning.
Over three months, so I understand. But, yeah, this is the venue, and I actually will take ownership for the flip book and the model, and being sensitive to the amount of work that went into designing this. Trying to make this as easy on our admin to come up, and I gave them that two-minute rule. They could, they don't, they don't have the bandwidth right now to be putting together slide decks either for this, so I just want to say that I take, I take responsibility for the method in which we did it, and we will post this online for folks to see as well, so.
Perfect. One other ask is, I know there was mention of communication. Can folks include this flip book in your newsletters, so families can get this as well if they don't go to the website, so that they're, they're bombarded with this, so that they can see it, and they're, they're, because it is a lot of great stuff, and your work should be shown and consumed by the families that would benefit from this. The other thing, looked, I love the, the philosophy of having success criteria that's quantitative. My suggestion, some may be tougher to quantify than the year, so we just look at that again and see if there's something you may want to tweak it. I mean, it's nothing that's going to posit from approving, but just look to see, is it something that really could measure come end of year? So make your lives easier. I know for me at work, all the time, I set up my success criteria, and then I come back to the end, it's like, oh crap, I can't measure that. So, so, just, just a thought. My question that's specific to a group though, is high school. So, sorry, Dr. Weber, we're going to put you back on the hot seat. I love the idea of the high school grading, grading adjustment, but you're looking at three-year plan?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit to, like, how that's going to help our students in the district compete against other high schools, in terms of the work that's being done?
That might be year two or three of my thought process. Basically, I think, I, I think our first year is focusing on what we're calling sort of a grading audit. It's the collection of data, and it was important for me to present this this way to our staff as well, because we're focusing so much on our Wind Block initiative, that, but, but it's also so important. And this is something that we hear about from multiple people in multiple ways. We hear from students about their grades, we hear from guidance counselors about what does, what does a student's grade mean in terms of, like, how it's reported on a transcript, and what is this information that's being conveyed to colleges? And what, what, what is the, what does it take to earn a grade at Franklin High School? We know what the number looks like and appears like, but what does that mean? And so I think that indirectly answers your question, but our purpose in doing this is to really investigate what our grades are coming from, from at Franklin High School. So I think if you ask any teacher, they'll tell you that there is integrity behind their grade, and I won't disagree with that, there is. However, I think there are some variances, and we need to work on becoming more aligned in our practices, in our beliefs, and what is formulated behind the grade. So when someone, when a student earns an A, what does that mean for Franklin High School? Whether it's in the math department, social studies department, art department, whatever it might be. And that's really our ultimate goal, because these are, grades are important. And I think when we learn, after we do some evaluation of the data, we'll be able to better, if, come up with a better answer to your question, if that makes sense. But ultimately, that's the, that's the purpose.
Yeah, and understood, especially year one, getting into this, I think it's a great endeavor, and there'll be more that we'll hear. So looking forward to seeing what you all find out, and what changes would come as a result of the work that you're doing.
I just wanted to add too, that in terms of grades, I feel like our grades are also feedback for students as they're progressing through our high school, and so making sure that for all students, as you asked, all students are getting that feedback along the way that is meaningful and really guiding them as they're learning. So I think that's also part of our conversations ahead.
Thank you. I am good.
Getting a workout tonight.
I'm not going to call anyone up, so feel free. I did keep track of the one over the two minutes, so we'll have to address that later. You know, really, I think the important thing to take out of this is that there are a lot of things moving around. Greatly appreciate the effort to summarize this. I do think the idea from Al to, to really circulate this would be great. Parents can see some of the more granular things, and I think that allows them to follow along and engage. Flipping through this, you know, as y'all were speaking, and really seeing where people sat down, you know, in those two-minute windows, one of the big things that kept on coming up was really establishing the culture and the communication, both internally, you know, making sure that the groups are actually working well, but then also communicating out into the community. And I've heard a lot of that, I think I've seen a lot of it, you know, from various facets of the, you know, of the school community. Basically, my hope is that we continue it, really making sure the parents are along for the ride, making sure that they know what's going on, that we're addressing things as they come up. You know, I think sometimes it, it feels like you're, you're chasing a lot of things at once, and that's always true, right? You know, we have how many thousands of students that we're responsible for. But one of the very big things there is that I think if we're able to counter concerns and small things that come up with what's actually happening, it really puts us in a good position, and that point of communication really kind of comes across. So I just want to make sure that as we're establishing this, as we're looking through it, that we really focus on making sure that we're addressing the concerns that parents have, that they feel heard, that, you know, it's not jumping through multiple hoops to try and, you know, get out there, or have something really be, be corrected in their eyes, or at least addressed. I haven't seen that yet, so I'm not trying to say that this is something to be corrected, but I think that we really need to, in these new communities, establish that as the way that we work. So appreciate it.
All right, and online, McNeil?
I don't have any additional questions, I just like to say thank you all for all the work you've put into these plans and the overall district improvement plan. Now, as we talked about earlier with the transportation update, and it's going to be a year of challenges and growing pains, and the best way to tackle and address that is to have a clear strategic vision. And it's, it's very obvious that all of you have put in the hard work to lay out a very clear and thoughtful strategic vision for not only the district overall, but each individual school. And I think, you know, we as a community should find a lot of comfort in that, that we have administrators and staff who are putting in the thought and the hard work and into these details, and what the vision is going forward for the newly organized district. So thank you all for all this work, and I know we look forward to seeing the work that you do and how it unfolds. Thank you.
All right, and Gallagher?
Yeah, everything I had was covered already, but thank you so much. Great information to start off our new year.
All right, fantastic. Thank you all again so much.
So it just, we will move into some discussion actions, where you'll approve the trip and the district improvement, school improvement plans. And then at that point, these administrators have to get up early. I'm hoping the chair will, you know, be, be good to go, so we can kick, send them, send them home. Kick them loose, I was going to say, just to be clear, not kick them out. All right, so we'll just go through the list. First, Portugal Lisbon field trip. I recommend approval of the request of Christopher Penza to take the FHS students to Portugal Lisbon from April seventeen, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven, as discussed.
All right, is there a motion as discussed?
Move to approve the Portugal Lisbon field trip as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions? All right, vote will come on roll call. Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
St. Pauli?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district improvement plan as discussed.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district improvement plan as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions? All right, roll call. Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
St. Pauli?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six ECDC school improvement plan as discussed.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six ECDC school improvement plan as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions? All right, roll call vote. Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
St. Pauli?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Callahan, yes, almost there.
I recommend approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six elementary school improvement plans as discussed.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six elementary school improvement plan as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions? Roll call. Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
St. Pauli?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Callahan, yes.
I recommend approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Franklin Middle School improvement plan as discussed.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six middle school school improvement plan as discussed.
Thank you, is there a second?
Wait, which one of us? I'll second it.
All right. Roll call. Griffith? Roll call, Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Sam Polly?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. Thank you.
I recommend the approval of twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six Franklin High School improvement plan as discussed.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six Franklin High School improvement plan as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions? Switching it up, Sam Polly? O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
O'Sullivan, uh, nope, Gallagher?
Yes.
And Callahan, yes. Excellent.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I wonder, are they going to yell and scream like the cheerleaders do?
I don't know.
They look a little too tired.
It's been a long few weeks.
Yeah. All right, discussion-only items, none information matters. We'll start budget. Neil?
No updates at this time.
All right, policy?
No updates at this time. I will get the schedule out to you guys, though. Tina and I did finalize some dates, so.
Fantastic, all right, community relations.
Yep, for community relations, the last newsletter went out on the twenty-eighth of the month, before the school year started. The next one is going out on the second of October. We do have Harvest Fest, which is on September twenty-seventh, same place as always, downtown. It is from, what's the time? Give me one second. Should I have that? I don't have it on my calendar. It's like from like twelve to five, I believe. We'll, we'll, I know I had sent out the sign-out sheets for folks to cover, so we'll touch base on that. Given where we're at with the school year, and Superintendent Jagir is, is kind of busy, so we don't have our, we won't have a community relations meeting, but we'll just kind of talk offline with dates, make sure that, that's all covered. Yeah, see, if you, if you wanted a little break.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's it.
All right, PCC?
No meetings as of yet. Same thing as well, figured we would just give everybody a break, let the dust settle. I'm going to talk to Superintendent Jagir to see if we do something in October, or do we just wait until after the elections and then go from there, so more to come.
Okay, SWAC?
No. Not big enough.
Okay, and mental health?
No updates at this time.
All right. Consent agenda?
I recommend approval of the minutes from your August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting as detailed.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as detailed.
Second? Discussion questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Sam Polly?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. All right. Good order. First meeting of the, the month, opportunity to talk, discuss, where is the school committee can, district can approve?
Yeah, so one thing that I've been looking at, don't always compare ourselves, or our approach to other bodies' meetings, but I do know that we have citizens' comments at the end. I think there was some rational thought behind that, kind of, when, when there's a, a lot of engagement during COVID. I think it might be nice to kind of encourage folks to, to come. I know our meetings can go a little bit late tonight's early, not even nine fifteen at the moment. But I do think, especially around some of these, you know, the, the high, high attention moments, it would be helpful to have that input, and I think if we moved that earlier in the overall meeting, it could really encourage that for some of the parents. Just thought, I don't know how formal we have to get with actually moving that around, but it might be something for us to consider at this juncture.
Thank you.
Nope, nothing tonight.
I just want to acknowledge that, when you introduced the new hires tonight, I've been asking for that for a while, because I do watch with the town council, and whenever they hire somebody for the town, it's like such a festival at the town council meeting, whereas therefore vow, you know, all that. So it's nice to acknowledge when we have these new educators, and get to read a little bit of their credentials, because, you know, it's impressive. I mean, along with all the consistent professional development everyone has to do, to just, you know, multiple master's degrees and this and that, it's nice. So I, I, I love that, so here we go.
We're just missing the rank structure and, and some of that.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all, I just, I love that, so, yeah. I think that it should be like a pinning ceremony, you know? I think it's like, these people are like-
You get your badge.
They're warriors, you know? It was funny, because I was like playing around with it when I saw the agenda come over, and I literally took one of your, something that somebody had written up about one of them, and it was like, whereas, you know, now therefore be it proclaimed that the municipality with the recognition declaration extends to Mrs. Gillians wants it, you know, it's like, it's, that's, you guys deserve that, so. I thought it was awesome, I liked that. So the community gets to know the educators, you know, because like, we get to, because we get to go in and out of schools, and parents get to, but the larger community doesn't get to really engage as much, so it's nice.
Yeah, how many, the question is, how many left over for the vacancies?
We have two, two teachers, nine ESPs, and four or five non-union staff members. And those are all posted, and they're on our website, and they're on School Spring, which is the educator site that we use to post, along with many other schools.
Apart from the posting there, we post any, any other websites, or?
Uh, they do get pushed out to Indeed, to Indeed as a site, so they get automatically moved, and you can search for them, and they do come up in a search. Yeah.
Fine, thank you.
And how about online, McNeil? All right, Aaron?
Not for me.
All right. Fantastic, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens in audience, in person or online, who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, and falls within the committee's purview? Yeah? Reese, come on up, name, address, take it away.
Hi, yeah, I'm Henry Reese Hansen, two Janey Avenue, I go by Reese. And there were three things I wanted to touch upon. First and foremost, I wanted to share with the committee and with Superintendent, that my family's had a really great start to the school year. My son's been paired with someone who seems to be a really excellent match for him as a teacher, which is really wonderful to see. Our bus driver's been putting a lot of effort into learning the kids, matching them with the adults that they belong to, and that's felt really great. So, and my kid's been coming home pretty happy, and talking about good things happening in school, so that's been awesome. So thank you for everything that went into creating that experience. The second thing I wanted to touch upon is just a brief comment about Wind Block. Please stop me if this, you know, steps over that agenda line. But I've had personal experience working with students in other districts that have really benefited from that kind of flexible structure. They've used it really well. It's helped them access resources they wouldn't have been able to otherwise, so it's really great to see that has come to Franklin. The last thing I wanted to comment on was last, last meeting, you, you'd spent some time talking about AI and how that's going to be integrated into the school district. And it happens, I've been working on a continuing education with a friend of mine, related to AI. He's brought me in to kind of think about mental health and psychological aspects of it. And so when you were talking about it, I was like, mental health needs to be part of this.